Anna, will you make sure she's on her Brea account?
Yes. Okay Heather's in. Good evening and welcome to the June 13th District Academic Calendar Hearing. Roll call please. Here.
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 Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Mrs. Wheeler. Okay. Okay, thank you.
On the 21st, 22nd, 21st of December. And there's a couple of days then in January, the first and second, coming back to school. On the third, with the 12th of January being Teacher Work Day, Semester Grades Due, and followed up by Martin Luther King Day on the 15th. President's Day on February 19th, Spring Break as I had already mentioned. And the 27th of May Memorial Day with our Last Day for Students on the 30th. And we end the Last Day for Staff on the 31st of of May. And that's kind of it. One of the, one of the things you may note is that typically we had two in-service days for staff at the beginning of the school year where we've been making a conscious effort to extend our student contact time. So we're taking that down to one student day and then of course adding the summer professional development to, to front-load our PD for our staff so they can hit the ground running when they get here in August. That's, that's about it. Is there any questions?
No, thank you Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve the 2023-24 calendar?
Second.
Thank you, roll call please.
Mrs. Zirkey?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to adjourn the District Academic Calendar Hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, adjourned.
Thank you. Now we're moving immediately into our regular business meeting. Uh, roll call please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Here.
Mrs. Ferris?
Here.
Mr. Mack?
Here.
Mr. Postal?
Here.
Mrs. Zirkey?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
It's a new meeting.
It's a new meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, I know it's confusing to people out there in the audience. That's really the only change, everything else will be normal from now on. Okay, next we have our Be a Titan recognition and I'll turn it over to our MC, Mr. Draves.
Hello again. Welcome to our Be a Titan Ceremony. We have, this is our third Be a Titan Ceremony of the 21-22 school year. The Be a Titan Ceremony started because we have so many great things going on and around our school district. And we wanted to take some time to recognize those individuals that epitomize and encapsulate what it truly means to be a Titan. Today, we're going to recognize students, staff, community members from all of our buildings and from all of our communities. Our principals will present the winners from their individual buildings. First, they'll come up and call all of their award recipients for their building at one time. Then they'll all come forward and then we'll, the principal will call their name and read why they're getting the award. The student will then come in front of the banner here and get their picture taken and exit stage left. I guess, is that stage right? I'm not sure. So our first presenter this evening is Dr. Smithberger from Brea Mid Park High School. Dr. Smithberger.
Good evening. And first off, congrats to all the participants here and award reckoners. From the high school, we have the Bashara family, if you can come on up, would be great. We have Matt Gans, Mikel Waters, John Selman, and Luca Sidovic. So, guys, come on up. Good day, guys. And we'll do, we'll do some announcements about why they're here in a second. We're just getting them all on stage here. Delton Wright Jr., Navea Harrison, and Katherine Patton. Welcome. So three times a year, we are asked as a building to recognize some people in our building for doing outstanding things. And tonight is no different for the high school. We have outstanding reckoners here this evening. So I'm going to go ahead and talk about why they're here and what makes them so outstanding. So we have the Bashara family, that is Charles, Donnell, and Sierra. Chuck and Donnell Bashara have been great supporters of our schools for many years. They have both served on numerous volunteer committees, and by that I mean nearly all of the volunteer committees, and support organizations in the district. Their daughter Sierra has made a significant impact as a student leader. She has also served on numerous committees, if not all of them. The Bashara family endlessly gives their time and use their voices to help make our schools and the Titan community a better place. We are thankful for their involvement throughout the years and greatly appreciate their partnership and support. The Bashara family, thank you. Hang on, hang on. Congratulations.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Listen to your mother. If you want to move over, you move over. Our next group of young men are part of the Construction Trades Program at Polaris. And yes, the building is brand new, yes, we moved into it a year ago, and you are correct, our storage space isn't ever enough. So just like at your house, we don't have enough storage. So these young men stepped up for us and helped us out. Led by their teacher, Mr. Jeff Bussler, they have met with us and the district administration over the course of the spring to plan and build a bike rack for the Co-Lake bikes in one of our storage facilities. Through their hard work and through their engineering and actually building the project, we now have a bike rack for all of our bikes. We have about 30-ish bikes that we keep in one of the storage areas that are now hanging on the walls. They've done a great job for us, their work's amazing, we're so proud of them, and they have unbelievable skills in the area of carpentry and construction. So gentlemen, awesome job, congratulations. Okay. And there are Matt Gans, Mikel Waters, John Selman, and Luca Sidovic. There we go, guys. Awesome job.
Congrats, guys.
Yeah, one picture for all of you guys. Unless you want to be by yourselves, you can do that as well. Yeah. Guys, well done. Our next award reckoner is Delton Wright Jr. Here's what our teachers write about Delton. "Delton is an absolutely amazing young man. He pursues excellence in all that he does. Delton is a good student, a dynamite athlete, but even more so, he is a wonderful human. Delton lives with integrity and helps others around him do the same. He has a smile that can light up a room and melt your heart. No matter what Delton is doing, he acts with purpose. He is a true example of what it means to be a Titan." Delton, congratulations. Delton is also one of the few students at the high school that can high jump over the top of my head if you wanted to. Our next student is Navea Harrison. Navea is an outstanding student, a leader, but this spring she did something that took unbelievable integrity. On Senior Scholarship Night, she was awarded a scholarship for her college major she picked to go into. At the end of the award ceremony, she met me on stage and said, "I'm giving that money back." I said, "You're doing what?" She's like, "I changed my major, I'm no longer going to major in that. Now that scholarship shouldn't go to me anymore, it needs to go to someone who's majoring in that field." We would have never known if she didn't tell us that. Think about the integrity it takes for someone to do the right thing when no one knows the difference anyhow. She didn't have to do that, she wanted to do that. So, Navea is a leader, she is honest, she is trustworthy. I'm happy to report the Scholarship Foundation found out the story and let her keep the money. So it came full circle, she's doing the right thing, she was rewarded. But what an outstanding example of what it means to be a Titan, to be honest. Congratulations, Navea. And our staff reckoner this evening is Katherine Patton. Here's what Ms. Slider wrote about Ms. Patton. "I would like to nominate Katherine Patton for the Titan Award because she embodies the many exemplary characteristics of a premier educator. Mrs. Patton passionately advocates for her students in both the classroom and she assists them with plans for the future. She initiates and maintains excellent communication with parents because she understands that students' achievement begins with having a solid team, a solid team in place. She takes initiative, demonstrates enthusiasm for learning, and has a patient and approachable disposition. Her caring nature and genuine commitment to the teaching profession are just some of the reasons for Ms. Patton to be honored with this award. It is an honor and privilege to be recognized, to recognize her this evening, Ms. Patton." Once again, congrats to all the high school recognized people and honorees. Next up is Middle School Principal Nick DeSenza.
Good evening, Nick DeSenza, Principal at the Middle School. I'm excited to recognize a few of our middle school Titans, following individuals, if you'll make your way up to the front. Christina Calvis, Gabriella Westgate, Len Mooney, and Fred Zabo. All right, I didn't think I saw our other two recipients, so today we're going to honor Len and Fred for very similar reasons. Len, when the decision was made to recognize you, it didn't take long for me to reach out and get a lot of wonderful words of praise and kind sentiment from your colleagues over the years. So here's what your colleagues had to say about you, Len. For 30-plus years, Mr. Len Mooney has served the best interest of the Brea City School District and its students as the Director of Camp My Broby. He has ensured that thousands of students have had an authentic outdoor educational experience. Mr. Mooney spearheaded the camp experience that has gone on at Camp Whitewood since My Broby moved there over 25 years ago. He cultivated a camp experience where thousands of students learned outdoor activities with their classmates. He also educated hundreds of high school students who were former campers themselves how to be leaders and camp counselors. Camp My Broby was not just a program or a thing that happened every year. It has become a rite of passage for all students in the Brea City School District. When seniors graduate, the overwhelming majority say that their most monumentous school event was Camp My Broby, and that is due to the work and effort put forth by Mr. Mooney. Congratulations, Len.
I got to just tell you, in the morning, there's a beautiful lineup of planets. All seven planets are in one small, check it out. Now, now, it's gorgeous, if it's ever not cloudy.
All right. For very similar reasons, we are going to be, thank you, Len. Recognizing Mr. Fred Zabo. For 33 years, Mr. Fred Zabo has been a part of the Brea City School District Camp My Broby Experience, more affectionately known as Officer Fred. He began attending camp on a volunteer, on a volunteer basis when he became the school's Dare Officer. For over 30 years, he has been a positive male role model for every student who has gone to camp. He has taken part in all of the outdoor activities and offered valuable advice to Mr. Mooney and the camp staff. As a Vietnam War veteran, he has taken it upon himself to educate the students about patriotism. During Camp Week, Officer Fred can be seen daily leading students in flag raising ceremony at dawn and lowering of the flag at dusk. Through his affiliation with the Brea VFW Post Number 6676, Officer Fred has coordinated thousands of dollars of donations to the BCSD and Camp My Broby in particular. Funds that helped to pay for T-shirts or hats for high school student counselors, improvements to the campground, grounds and camp programs, but most importantly, funds that would create scholarships for students to attend camp based on financial need. The name Officer Fred has become synonymous with the Camp My Broby Experience. Thank you, Officer Fred, for everything. And now, Mrs. Katie Rolland, Big Creek.
All right, good evening. I'm Katie Rolland, I'm the principal at Big Creek Elementary School, and we have a whole slew of people to recognize tonight. I always enjoy this opportunity. So if you would please come up here to the stage, that would be Hudson Blatnica, Rebecca Bryce Donahue, and Kelly Bickley, Davion Tucker, April Rivera, Grayson Lindley, and Mason Russell, and Benji Richter. Come on up. All right. And I'm going to have you all come a little closer, I think these are still some of our COVID practices, right? So come a little closer, perfect. All right, so first up tonight, I'd like to recognize Hudson Blatnica. And this spring, we offered it to all of our teachers and staff and said, "Who are some names that really stand out?" And Mrs. Stinnam, our art teacher, she was one of the first to respond and Hudson's name came to her list. And the remarkable thing is, she sees about 470 students, and so for Hudson, he really stood out in her mind, and I would agree. She said, "He always gives his best effort on his projects. He always offers to clean up and takes it upon himself to clean up after himself, to others, and making sure the whole room is put back together. He's pleasant, he is a quiet gentleman, he is friendly to everyone and never unkind. And I can tell you from firsthand observations, he will befriend someone sitting by themselves at the lunch table, in the classroom, at playground, and he truly is kind to everyone." So congratulations, Hudson Blatnica, for being a Titan. All right, come on over. Okay, so I just heard Rebecca's home with her baby, but Kelly is here tonight. And Kelly and Rebecca were recognized, Mrs. Brusk, our media specialist, reached out and she wrote the following. She said, "Rebecca and Kelly joined the CCPL Middleburg Heights Branch about two years ago, and they have been collaborating together on lessons and projects for Big Creek Elementary students ever since. During remote learning, Rebecca and her staff made videos on various literacy topics to correlate with literacy events or library lessons. Whenever presented with an idea, they always took the initiative to get it done. We have had an excellent working relationship and have collaborated on projects such as Read Across America, Tournament of Books, Cultural Celebrations, Poetry, Literacy Night, Children's Book Week, Makerspace Challenge, and our Summer Reading Program. Their leadership qualities and service to the students at Big Creek Elementary School make them excellent candidates for the community and to be recognized tonight, and I could not agree more." So thank you and congratulations. All right. You ready? Okay. Our next recognition is for Benji, and I'll read what we wrote, okay? All right, buddy, come here. "If your day includes a few minutes with Benji, then you are a lucky person. Benji has been at Big Creek since first grade, and he has grown up in so many ways, and now you lead your classroom." Did you know that? Yeah? "We are so happy to have Benji as part of our Big Creek family, and I will tell you without question, you have already grown up into a fine young man and will continue to do so. So we are very proud of you and congratulations, Benji." All right. You ready, Gray? All right. So this is Grayson, and he is half of the duo. I don't think Mason is here tonight, Mason's not here. No, okay. "Over the course of the school year, Grayson and Mason have become an important part of our morning breakfast routine. Both boys took up the responsibilities to help move our breakfast carts into the pickup lanes for students, and they have done it without anyone asking. They saw a need, they said, 'Let's help,' and they do so. And they do it every day with a smile, with a gracious helping hand, and they really model what it means to serve others. So we were thrilled to recognize them tonight, Grayson Lindley and Mason Russell." So we were thrilled to recognize them tonight, Grayson Lindley and Mason Russell. Congratulations." Hey. All right, our last one to recognize tonight, but surely someone who's made an impact in many lives this year, is April. April is one of our instructional chairs at Big Creek. If you've spent any time in education over the last couple of years with COVID, instructional leadership has been a hard gig, and you took that challenge on. As we've continued to build our teacher-based teams, April has continued to guide her team through the process, allowing opportunities for the team to be honest and vulnerable and really encouraging growth in the area of teaching. She truly embraces growth, not only for herself, but she models that with the people she works with. April is a rock star at our dismissal process. Also, if you've ever worked in an elementary school, dismissal is not an easy task, but she has, she steps up and she's like, "I've got it, I'll do it," and she does it every day. She quickly organizes our students, our parents, our staff, and she does it with the idea of, "Let's keep them safe, let's be efficient," and just does it with a gracious heart. And so I am so thrilled to recognize April tonight, and thank you for being a Titan. All right. And with that, I'm gonna introduce Terry Grimm and Nick Dorr from Grindstone Elementary School. Thank you.
Good evening, Terry Grimm, principal at Grindstone, and this is Mr. Dorr. He is our assistant principal. And it is a pleasure to be up here tonight to recognize the following students, staff, and community members from Grindstone. So when you hear your name, please come up on stage. Asaya Austin, Bella Ebinger, Drew Bootick, Sadie Kuska, Gia Vozar, Annabelle Crane, Jason Lewis, Colleen and Millie Gross, and Georgia R. Curry.
All right, we're gonna start with Asaya. Asaya was nominated by her third-grade teacher from this past year, Ms. Thomas. And this is what Ms. Thomas had to say about Asaya. "I cannot say enough about what a great student and example of a Titan Asaya is. She is quiet, but she leads with confidence and understanding. She accepts challenges and does not give up when something gets tough. She has a growth mindset and sets goals to improve in the areas that she needs to. She is kind to her classmates and respectful at all times, and they look to her for support. I am particularly impressed by how Asaya embraced our new student this year. She set a great example, and as a result, the student had adjusted well to Grindstone and the Brea community. Asaya is always willing to lend a helping hand in the classroom. I am proud to be Asaya's third-grade teacher, and I can't wait to see all of the great accomplishments that she will have in the future. Asaya is a super Titan. Congratulations." All right, next, we're gonna recognize a group of students. This is Bella, Drew, Sadie, Gia, and Annabelle. So this group of students joined together in a true sense of community spirit to support a classmate after she had surgery. Drew, Sadie, Gia, and Annabelle modeled for the class how to support and care for Bella by guiding her safely in her wheelchair, organizing her supplies, making her feel comfortable during the daily routines in class, and giving her extra love and attention throughout the day. Bella took on this new challenge with a big smile on her face each day, and I got to witness that nearly every day as she came into school through the main hallway. She persevered with the most positive attitude. The friendships that formed along with the true care and concern for one another over the last few months, I'm sorry, the last month, was very heartwarming. Drew, Sadie, Gia, Annabelle, and Bella are wonderful examples of what it means to be a Titan. Congratulations to all of you. All right, Drew. Sadie. All right, I'm gonna turn it back over to Mrs. Grimm.
The next person we'd like to recognize is Jason Lewis. Jason was nominated by the group of teachers in the 400 hallway, and they say that Jason is dedicated and hardworking. He has a friendly, positive attitude. He enters our classrooms daily with a warm hello and a smile. Jason takes pride in his work, and we are always grateful for his efforts. I can definitely say that Jason is a wonderful example of what it means to be a Titan. He is always kind, he's always friendly and cheerful, and willing to help wherever and whatever you need. So, Jason, we are very proud of you, and especially the fact that others can look up to you and know what it means to be a Titan. Congratulations. So, we have a special friend at Grindstone, and we wouldn't have Ms. Millie Gross if it wasn't for Ms. Colleen Gross, and of course, her other handler, which is Georgia R. Curry, who could not be here tonight. But we would like to just recognize all the work that they've done and the joy and the cheer that they've brought to Grindstone, not only to our students, but to our staff. So, this is what has been referred to as the Dream Team, has brought Millie to Grindstone, understands the needs of the students and our staff. Millie has encouraged and inspired many students at Grindstone to read and to be their very best. A smile is always the first thing that the community of Grindstone has when they see them coming down the hall. It's true. And there's lots of treats in the office as well for Millie. There's a whole container just for Millie. And if you're another dog friend, then you're lucky, because we take care of her. So the social-emotional support that this team brings to our school community is second to none, and all three of them together are truly what it means to be a Titan. Congratulations. And now I'm gonna turn the podium over to Keira McGregor, counselor at BPE.
Good evening. The following people, Lincoln Homel, I saw you here. Lincoln, come on up. Victoria, I saw you here. Sophia Hedjuk, Aaron Schiferstein, Cass Weiss, and Leila Makaya. Come on up. I see you all have your summer tans. I love it. Hi. Okay, we will start with Lincoln. Hi, Lincoln. It's good to see you. Did you watch any Titan tips lately? All right, this is Lincoln. He is in Mrs. Tefanko's first-grade class. She nominated him for the Titan Award, and she shared that he can always be counted on, and is a shining example of what it means to be a Titan in our classroom and throughout BPE. Lincoln is always following school rules, whether it be following hallway manners, raising his hand when participating, coming in prepared, ready, and eager to learn. Most importantly, Lincoln is always respectful to everyone that he interacts with, whether that's adults or classmates. He is kind and helpful to everyone around him. He cheers up friends who are down with kind words and encouragement, and one of the favorite things that she likes to see is your taking on the role of being a peer tutor in the classroom. Well done. He jumps right in and helps to reteach others around him in his groups for reviewing activities. The classmates are lucky to call him a friend, and teachers are lucky to call him their students. As a district, we are lucky to call you a Titan. The sky's the limit. Congratulations, Lincoln. Victoria Noor, hello. Good evening. Victoria's classroom teacher, Mrs. Burke, shared that she comes to school every day wearing a smile on her face. She is kind, caring, and understanding of others' needs. Victoria is always reaching out to those who might need an extra hand in class or a friend at recess. She's a true leader, and we can't wait to see what her future holds for her as she enters fourth grade at BPE. We're very proud of you, Victoria. Keep smiling. Way to be a Titan. Sophia. Hi. All right, Sophia was nominated by our third-grade classroom teacher, Mrs. Gully. Mrs. Gully shared that Sophia is a true model of a Titan. She's always respectful to her peers, her teacher, and expectations in third grade. She's responsible by putting forth her best effort in her classwork and homework and keeping her area and locker neat and tidy. Sophia is also safe by following the rules in the classroom and all over BPE. Most important, Mrs. Gully shares that she is always kind and willing to help a classmate in need. Always be you, Sophia, and always be a Titan. I'm so proud of you, and we look forward to you being the leader next year in fourth grade. Nice job. Congratulations. All right, Leila. Hi. All right, Leila's classroom teacher, Mrs. Madaglia, shared that she is a super Titan. She shared that she's always willing to lend a hand to a teacher or a classmate. Her enthusiasm for learning is uplifting, and her smile is contagious. Leila is truly an example of what a Titan looks like. Leila, I'm so proud of you, and you'll always be a Titan each and every day. Congratulations, sweetheart. Okay, so the next one is a team effort by Ms. Weiss and Mr. S. That we, we're gonna do these together. They put them together. So the two PE teachers, they came up with multiple staff members and could not agree more. Both Cass and Aaron are outstanding dedicated physical education teachers at BPE. These last two years, they have stepped up to support our teachers by going above and beyond when it comes to taking on classes and when we are short on coverage. They are always willing to step in, and it never goes unnoticed. The staff at BPE and myself would like to thank both Cass and Aaron for being role models on what it means to be a Titan. We appreciate you more than you will ever know. I couldn't agree more. Way to be a Titan. All right, I believe Mrs. Clammer's coming up. There she is.
Good evening. So I have two recipients. One of them is not here tonight, Jeannie Romano, but Miss Chantel Wright, if you could come on up. And ironically, as she's coming up, I'm not sure if you noticed, but her son, I wanna say, Dalton, was nominated at the high school. So they are a true Titan family. So at Snow School, I have the pleasure of working with Ohio Guidestone staff. So, Miss Chantel Wright is a hall monitor with Ohio Guidestone, but she works hand-in-hand with our Brea team every single day, working with students. And what's amazing about Miss Chantel is she speaks the Titan language every day with our students as an example. When she was never trained in the Titan language or lingo or anything, but it's how are you showing to be a Titan, being responsible or being respectful? And that really impressed me from the get. And she just, she is like the child whisperer. When there's, when there's an issue and a child's upset, she's able to come and just calm them down, either with humor or with music or just a gentle touch. She's just the child whisperer. And then she just goes above and beyond. We had a student one day who had very tangled hair, very, very tangled hair, the poor girl, and Miss Chantel spent hours before school trying to comb it out for her. And then when she got to school, she was researching how to, different products that she could purchase on her own to help this child so she could learn how to take care of her hair better, so it wasn't a tangled mess. So she is just an exemplary model of what a Titan is, and we're happy to have her.
Before we conclude this evening, I'd like to introduce our Director of Pupil Services, Lori Sanson, who has a special award this evening.
Good evening, everybody. I believe that this is the first Titan Award that goes to an administrator in the school district. And so on behalf of, well, this is for Tammy Clammer, and she was nominated on behalf of Bonnie Zeiger and the Snow School and Ohio Guidestone staff. Tammy came to Snow School and faced adversity right off the start, but she persevered and kept her positive momentum going. She continually promoted a sense of community within the staff of Snow School and Ohio Guidestone by showing appreciation for each and every staff member, acknowledging each individual's accomplishments and skills, building one staff, one school. She accepted others' ideas and thoughts, taking each one into consideration before making decisions, and her decisions were based on what was best for both students and staff. She put educating the students first and foremost, wanting to ensure that each student was given the opportunity to be the individual that they are and excel farther than the students could ever imagine. Tammy reorganized and improved the atmosphere at Snow School and was a key factor in implementing Makerspace, bringing critical thinking and creativity to the students. She was determined to make the students feel like part of the community, a place where they had input and that they could be proud of, to make each student feel like a Titan. Tammy accomplished this and even more in just one year. I can only imagine how much more she will accomplish with each and every year that Tammy is at J&amp;G Snow School. Congratulations, and thank you for always being a Titan.
I just want to take the opportunity to personally thank and for, on behalf of the board, to congratulate all of the winners this evening. It is such a great way to go into the summer, to have such positive things being said about our schools, our district, our community, our students, our staff. And so truly, I just want to say thank you, and I really can't wait to see what the future holds for all of you. So I'll turn it over to Anna.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Congratulations to all of our recipients this evening, as always, you make us extremely proud, and just very blessed to be school board members in the Brea City Schools. At this time, everyone is welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you don't choose to do so, you can leave right now, absolutely no problem. Thank you, and have a great summer. Next on the agenda is public participation. Hold on, let me know when it's ready. Okay, next is public participation. We have two speakers this evening. First is Dr. Barbara McLean. If you could come up to the podium, please.
So, Mrs. McLean? Miss McLean? I'm sorry, you're going right there.
Yep, that microphone right there, yep.
Is it on? Yep.
Okay, good evening, board members. I wanted to address something that I have been dealing with for the past month that I took upon myself. I had the opportunity to talk to four different grade school children. One of the children that I did speak with is a very important individual in my life that I've known since birth. And out of curiosity over all the different problems that we are talking about within the educational system, I just decided to flat-out ask, are you allowed to say "boys" and "girls" any longer? Each child that I was talking to, they were uncomfortable with the question. One individual actually became visibly upset. The body language was closed off, and I could tell that my question was making this individual quite uncomfortable. And for time purposes, I won't go into each question that I asked these children, and if you want to know what I asked, I'd be happy to forward that information to you because they were just standard questions. One was, can you say "boys" and "girls" any longer? The second question I asked was, how are the schools addressing gender? Boy, girl, he, she, they, them, trans, and how they are seeing and identifying themselves? The answer I got from each child was, we're not allowed to talk about this to anybody. It stays in the classroom. It's between us and the teachers. And I said, but if you're not allowed to talk about it, why are you so upset? Because we're afraid that we'll get in trouble if we do talk about it. That bothered me. And I said again, well, can you say "boy" or "girl"? And the response from the one individual who was the most clearly upset, who happens to be important in my life, was, we are told that we don't necessarily know yet what our genders are, that we have to determine what we are. I may not be a boy, she may not be a girl, and it's very confusing to me why this has to be discussed in the classroom. I couldn't answer this young child's question. And I said, I think you need to bring that up with the teacher, I think you need to bring that up with your parents. But if you're uncomfortable, please bring it up. And my challenge to the board and to every teacher in this district is, if you're seeing that these children are visibly uncomfortable and upset with these gender issues, with can I say "boy" or "girl" any longer, make sure that you're not upsetting these kids because they're innocent children and we want to keep their innocence. These types of conversations need to...
Excuse me, Ms. McLean? I'm not sure if there's a timer there, but three minutes has passed. I think for your comments, I would ask that you please forward the information that you're talking about to myself as well as Mrs. Wheeler, so that we can address it and take a closer look at it.
I'll forward the questions that I asked, but out of the respect for the privacy of the children and the parents, I will not disclose these kids' names. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Ryan McLean.
Okay, this is working. I just have one quick comment for, one quick rebuttal from the last time I spoke. I wasn't allowed to respond. Regarding SEL, if it looks like a behaviorist model of counseling, acts like a behaviorist model of counseling, and functions like one, it is one. The last time, we were referred to the Ohio Department of Education's website. This is the same Ohio Department of Education. It did not handle COVID very well in the 2020, 2021 cycles. I don't really trust what the ODE says, and very many other people do not as well.
Thank you, Ryan. Next, we have a presentation on the English Language Arts curriculum.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to be here and share a little bit about our process this evening on our adoption that we are taking on for our English Language Arts in grades 5 through So, our process in our selection of our grades 5 through 8 ELA adoption began with a goal in mind, and that goal for us to start was, how can we improve our student achievement by identifying possible resources that are aligned to the state standards that are coherent, appropriate, and functional? So, we started at this point with our goal, and just to kind of define what we mean by coherent, these are concepts and content and skills that are aligned to our state standards. Appropriate, and that is appropriate to our age and ability level, and incorporates lessons and activities that are varied and engaging to students, and functional, and that it will work seamlessly with our state and district processes with progress monitoring, grading, and reporting. So, our goal at the beginning was to begin with targeting those specifics and, go to the next slide. Our process that we took on this year, we started with surveying our ELA teachers in 5 through 8, surveying their current status, their current resources, how they felt about those resources, needs. And then we moved into our committee selection. So, we selected committee members to begin this review process. We had teachers, intervention specialists, administrators, instructional coaches, all a part of this committee. And then we took a look at some independent evaluations of some of the curriculum resources. So, we kind of began with looking at what are the top-performing resources that have been evaluated by Ed Reports. And then from there, we started to kind of narrow it down, narrow our focus. We wanted content or resources that were recently published. We wanted there to be online component as well as physical resources. We wanted it to be flexible, not rigid and lockstep, and we wanted there to be differentiation, easily accessible, or differentiation resources as an option to meet all the needs of our students. And then we wanted it to be a resource that could be used 5 through 8. We did not want a resource that would be different at each grade level to help address the district priority of streamlining. Go to the next. So, we narrowed our search down to three resources, and we evaluated each of these. You can go to the next slide. When we researched each of those potentials, again, we were focusing on the alignment to our state standards, which was one of our highest priorities, appropriateness to the age, these were all defined in our goals, functionality and usability, and then it needed to have highest assessment ratings through Ed Reports, the independent assessment resource that we used online. We needed there to be additional resources available, so provide a lot of different options for teachers to use in the classroom, and we were also looking for that digital and physical resource available. So, we audited each of those previously mentioned resources, and the team, this spring, identified our resource that we will be proposing to move ahead with is the platform and the resource from Houghton Mifflin called Into Reading for grade 5 and Into Literature for grades 6 through 8. Why do we select this? Well, our team, after assessment, found the tool to be incredibly flexible to reach the needs of our highest students and our students who would need additional support. So, incredibly flexible resource for all of our ELA teachers to use. The quality of the text was impressive to our team, both reading and writing instruction, a vast amount of differentiated tools to meet the needs of all of our students. Assessments are a part of the resource for teachers to use in, for formative and summative assessments to check for learning and understanding. Training, professional development is included, so our teachers will be prepared with the resources come fall. They did indeed, this resource did indeed have online access for students and for teachers. Students will be obtaining a consumable textbook to utilize through the course of the year. Additional grammar instruction, high-interest reading are all a part of this program. And in addition to that, the writing supplement will be included in this program, which is known as Writeable, which allows our students to have specific writing instruction, scaffolded writing instruction, and powerful feedback tools for our teachers to provide feedback for our students along the writing process. Go to the next slide.
There's no questions.
This is, last slide here to share, is these are the scores that were provided by the independent resource tool, Ed Reports, which reviews curricular resources in ELA and math. And the breakdown here of what you're looking at, they are evaluated on three gateways, and you can see in grades 5 through 8, the assessment by Ed Reports on text quality, building knowledge, and usability, all ranked within the highest possible scores according to this resource. And this, again, was the data that we used to help identify and narrow down our focus, that this would be a quality resource for our ELA teachers to use beginning next year. These resources will be available for review at our board office next week for any community members who would like to review or look at the resource. And Miss Turner, if you can go to the next slide. If there were any questions by the board that I could help answer, I would love to do so.
I have a question. Thanks for the presentation. I think two slides ago, one of the benefits or features of this program... Yes, that's it. High-interest reading. What does that mean? Does that mean that selections are customizable to the interests of students? Or what does that mean?
No, not necessarily customizable. So, the resource that, the compiled resources, which is made up of a variety of volumes of short stories, poetry, are all high-interest student selections that are appropriate to the age level and grade. So, the library and the collection of literature that's included in the program would be those that allow us to meet the standards at those grade levels and also pique the interest of the students at those particular grade levels.
Thank you. Mr. Blatniko, you said the material would be available next week. Could you give us some more specific timing, maybe, since anyone would like to stop by the board office to review these materials?
Well, absolutely. Well, they will be available this week. My mind, for some reason, feels like it's Friday. I don't understand why that's the case, but they will be available this week, so as soon as tomorrow. I apologize. So, we'll have those up there beginning tomorrow at the board office. There will be student, there'll be student volumes, 5 through 8, available.
Okay. And until when will they be available?
I will leave them up there through next Monday, so we'll give a full week.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Blatniko? Okay, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Next is superintendent's update.
I only have a couple of quick things. One, we are, you're going to, obviously, the board is going to approve tonight. We've been finishing up conducting interviews for our middle school and our Big Creek principal position, so excited to talk about that tonight after the board votes on it. And then also, just, we have been busy. Our administrative retreat is this week on Wednesday and Thursday, so we've been very busy getting that taken care of and with some last-minute changes due to the weather. We actually had to change the location of that this morning, so those are last-minute things that you don't plan on having to do because of the weather. So, we've just been busy with that, and like I said, I will update you with a couple of other things once we get through some different parts of the agenda.
Okay, thank you. The consent agenda, it's recommended that items E3 to E37 be approved as part of the consent agenda unless a board of education member wishes to have an item removed.
So moved. Wait, I talked before for a call, right? A forgetting process. So, a couple of things, obviously with our administrative moves, and there's no one here, hardly anyone left here, but obviously, Mr. DeSenza moving to be our new Director of Academic Affairs, and then Katie Rowland to come to the board office also to work as a coordinator of academic affairs. So, I'm very excited to announce tonight, so Mr. Tim Velata will be our new Berea Mid Park Middle School principal, and he's coming from us from Sharden Middle School. And then Ms. Bonnie Kubik will be our new principal at Big Creek Elementary School, and she is coming from Kidder Elementary School in Brunswick. And they were both going to come tonight, but I said, because you guys weren't here for them to meet in person, we will make sure that they come to the next board meeting so that you have an opportunity to meet them in person, ask questions, whatever you may do, need to do as a result of that. We have, Gelschmo is retiring after 32 years in the district. She's been with us since 1991, mostly as the Berea Mid Park High School or Berea High School Media Specialist, and then this past year, she was also at the middle school part-time. The third thing I wanted to say in there, too, is thanking the board for reviewing, and I know Mr. Graves had sent you an email request about looking at our summer rates, and so that was, this will really help us. We were with the new rates, moving a little further away from minimum wage. We don't know how many people out there are actually paying minimum wage right now, and we were really having a hard time finding summer help, so this will make us a little more competitive for us to be able to get the summer help that we need. And I think that's it.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Number 38, it's recommended that the revised substitute rates of pay as...
Number 38, it's recommended that the revised substitute rates of pay as outlined below be adopted as of July 1st, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
So we, I think, was that Cory? Second? Oh, Heather.
No, it was Neil.
That was Neil? Heather.
Neil, Heather, Heather, and second.
Okay. We, so I think the, we thanked the board in, I think it was January, or December or January this past year, we changed the rates. Again, just being able to try to find subs to help us through the end of the year. So we are going back on one of the rates as far as, instead of, we had like one to 20 days and 21 and days beyond, we're doing a flat rate of $120 per day regardless of when, how many days anyone is subbing for us. And the part that we thought was really important to keep was that long-term position of 200 days, $200 per day. That way, if we know, and that's really for a lot of our maternity leaves and things like that, where we know someone's going to be gone potentially right off the bat for six weeks or more. And then it would still stay consistent if they hit day 61, that a substitute would go to BA zero. And that actual $200 rate is not a whole lot less than what they would move to when they switch to BA zero if they're, if they're here for day 61.
Can roll call, please?
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Number 39, it's recommended that the individuals listed below be approved as football equipment managers for the 10 football games for the 2022-23 school year at the rate of $60 per game.
Postal, so moved.
Second.
This is a routine item that we, that we add. We, I don't think we had it last year or the year before because of COVID, so we've added that back to, to having that football managers on for this year.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Number 40, it is recommended that the individuals listed below be approved to sell tickets and work athletic events for the 2022-23 school year at the rate of $10 per hour for regular season games and $35 per hour for OHSAA tournaments. So moved.
Second.
Is this starting the whole list over again?
And so it begins.
And so it begins.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Okay, another consent agenda, it's recommended that items E42 to E49 be approved as part of the consent agenda unless a board of education member wishes to have an item removed. So moved.
These are all annual contract agreements. There are no new contracts in any of this consent agenda.
How does the quote from Liberty Mutual compare with our current premium? Can you name that off the top of your head?
Yes. No, we did see some increases with our property fleet liability insurance this year. The property went up because the buildings were reappraised to bring them up to fair market value, current market value. The fleet, that usually increases slightly every year. The liability insurance did increase across the board, across all school districts. School leaders' errand omissions has increased because of different litigations that have happened across the public school sector. Overall, there was about a 25% increase in our insurance rates. A good chunk of that, again, is the building reappraisal, bringing the buildings up to the proper value. So some of them were, were undervalued and they hadn't been reappraised in several years. So that, that is a big chunk of it. But the school leaders' errand omissions was another big chunk of it that, that increased. But yeah, overall, it was about a 25% increase in our insurance.
Thank you, Jill.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Number 50, it's recommended the board of education approve the advanced placement human geography course to the high school curriculum, originally proposed at the May 9, 2022 work session. So moved.
Second.
Are there any other questions about this? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Number 51, it's recommended the board of education approve the quantitative reasoning course to the high school curriculum, originally proposed at the May 9, 2022 work session. So moved.
Second.
Are there any other questions about this course? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Number 52, it's recommended the board of education approve the quote from National Geographic Learning and Cengage Learning for AP Geography Curriculum and Training as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Wheeler, is there anything information to give us on this?
No, nothing to add. It just is, it's just added to that AP curriculum course.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Number 53, it's recommended the board of education approve the service agreement between the Berea City School District and PSI affiliates for health services during the 2022 summer camp program as shown in the exhibit. So moved.
Second.
This is a routine agenda item. We just had to make it as a new contract this year because it's with a different company.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Number 54, it's recommended the board of education approve the following district-sponsored overnight field trip of Berea Mid Park High School varsity bowling team to Louisville, Kentucky, June 17 through June 20, 2022, for the national high school bowling championships. So moved.
I have nothing unless the board has questions about this.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Number 55, it's recommended the board of education approve the estimate from industrial surface sealer to resurface the tennis courts located at Berea Mid Park Middle School as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
So the only thing I want to add to this is that we're working right now with Middleburg Heights, that with everything being resurfaced on the courts, we are also going to be putting in pickleball court lines. The city asked us, they're actually, we're working with them to do it, but that's such a popular sport right now with some folks, so we said, why not? So that'll be an addition later.
Sounds awesome. Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Number 56, it's recommended the board of education approve base quotation A, Big Creek Concrete, from Ohio Paving, and base quotation B, Transportation Asphalt, from North Coast Paving, as shown in the exhibit. So moved.
Second.
So just to briefly summarize, at Big Creek, that's going to be cement for the front apron and the drop-off area, just to make that more handicap accessible. And then this will finish the lots at transportation that were in really, really bad shape that we started last summer. So this will be a welcome finish for transportation to get this done.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Number 57, it's recommended the board of education accept base quotation A and alternate number one from HMH Restoration for the 2022 exterior alterations at Berea Mid Park Middle School as shown in the exhibit. So moved.
Second.
So just to give you kind of an update on where we are with the, that main entrance exterior at the middle school, obviously, there's some work to be done. So we've committed this year to do, to finish off some of the mason work there, power washing that whole front side of the building. We are going to start with, so where all the, that tile work is, we're gonna, we're gonna be doing something with that tile work. We haven't fully decided what we're doing with that yet, but we are going to go ahead and put large lettering. It will be lettering that you can see clearly at the top of the, at the top of the building that will say Berea Mid Park Middle School. And then just a reminder that next year, then, we have budgeted to finish the entrance. So I don't want to say that we're going to finish it necessarily with a canopy because we have not determined yet what that's going to be. So we'll talk about that and get some ideas, but that will be ready to go next summer to finish that entrance off.
And when you say front of the school, you mean the side facing Paula?
Yeah.
Like the auditorium entrance?
Oh, no. It's the...
The other side by the library.
Correct, by the loop, because that is considered our, that, one of the things that we do have to do on that building too, is we need to make that a handicap accessible door, that entrance, because the handicap accessible door is actually over off of Paula. And, but that's not a buzzer system in or anything like that. So we're going to change up that parking, that whole front parking there will all be visitor and handicap parking, so on the loop by the library. That will, that, all that parking needs to change. And then, so we're trying to, I know Mike Slavatsky, which will be Mike Draves, has been trying to contact the door company who does those doors, and nobody's returning a phone call. So we're, we're working on that. So that'll also be something that we're going to look at fixing here as soon as we can, as soon as we can get in touch with the company. And I think, from what I understand, there's like the door company that, that does that. So if not, we're gonna have to punt and look for the next door company to do the work.
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Okay, next is our treasurer's update.
Tonight, I just wanted to update the board. We are getting ready for the June 30th board meeting, our year-end board meeting. In the treasurer's office, it's very busy right now, you know, cutting all the last check run, getting the purchase orders closed, getting the last payroll done, and you know, just, just keeping up with all the year-end tasks so we can get everything ready for that June 30th board meeting, so we can close one year and get the next year open and moving. And again, June 30th at 7:00 AM. Don't forget about that board meeting. And that's really all that's, that's been going on. Auditors have been contacting us already to, to begin audit work. I can't believe it's already audit season, but we will begin that work probably in July. We'll start with the auditors and get done what we can, and then get it finished up in the fall.
Thank you.
It's recommended that items F3 to F8 be approved as part of the consent agenda unless a board of education member wishes to have an item removed. So moved.
Second.
On the agenda tonight, mainly routine items, we have several donations on there, one for Big Creek Elementary and one for Brook Park Elementary. Thank you. Also too, for the board's consideration tonight, we have our fees, our school fees, the 2022-2023 school fees, and the 2022-23 athletic admission and pass pricing. There was not a ton of changes on the school fees for next year. If anything was changed, it was just an update in pricing from academic affairs. And on the athletic and admission pass pricing, there wasn't many changes to that either. So those are both on there for consideration under the consent agenda tonight.
Okay, are there any questions on anything? Jill, I'm looking at the athletic passes and some things are in red. Are those new?
They were, it probably changes to the athletic prices if they were in red.
Okay.
And that could either be, you know, more home games, more away game, or you know, basically, that's why that would change. I think they did add a student pass this year. But yeah, then the things in red would have been the changes.
It's nice that they're adding freshmen and middle school passes as well.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Okay. It's recommended the board of education approve the minutes of the May 23rd, 2022 regular meeting, and the May 26th, 2022 special meeting of the board of education as shown in the exhibits. So moved.
Second.
Are there any corrections or additions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Okay, next is a policy discussion on policy 5111.
Do you want me to start that? Okay.
Yes, please.
All right. So for the board to consider, and I had put in the, my board update on Friday, just some points of discussion for tonight. Are you able, Vicki, to pull up the, the link to what I had proposed for changes? Okay, if you scroll down. So there's a couple inserts here you'll see on the poll, and I, I apologize, I handwrote it, but at least I have decent handwriting. I didn't ask Mr. Draves to do it. So if you scroll... Okay, so here is, there's, there's two spots. So Vicki, if you just go ahead and scroll to the bottom, there's two spots where I have asked the board to consider proposed changes. That's a cleanup right there, just where it says Berea or Mid Park High School. So the two proposed changes, one is actually, is policy about children of active duty uniform service members, which is in policy 511.02 already, that we do permit. It basically has to do when students are enrolled, that we automatically enroll those kids. We don't necessarily have to wait on paperwork and things like that because they could be in transition. So one of the things, the first piece is obviously, children of active duty uniform service members who are subject to a transfer or relocation order and will be relocating to but do not yet reside in the district, shall be permitted to apply for enrollment in the same manner and at the same time as resident students in accordance with the provisions of the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children. This is a piece of the policy that we are required to take. So this was a update that we got, I think, in January, and I think, Mrs. Chapman, you and I had talked at that time, and there was, there were, there were a lot of different policies, and we said, just hold on this policy for right now. So that's a piece that we have to take. So the second piece of this then, that I've asked the board to consider, is asterisk number two there, naturally, so to allow, this is, this is to allow children to attend school tuition-free. That's what this is under in that policy. And it's naturally or legally adopted children of full-time staff members who reside outside the district, provided proper application and in accordance with the intra-district open enrollment timelines has been made. So with this, basically, what I was, I'm asking the board to consider is... So with this basically, what I was, I'm asking the board to consider is that, if we have staff members who, so we do not as a district have any open enrollment policy, um, inter, intra, no, inters, um, open enrollment policy, so we do not permit students outside our district to attend, only if they can attend, and the board has done this, the board approved two of these last year for us, for children of staff members to attend the district, but on a tuition basis. That tuition, um, last year was $11,658.76, so we did have two staff members who did pay that to have their children attend the district. So what I'm asking for is the board to consider, um, for our staff, if they choose to do so, that they would be able to tuition-free have their children attend our district. And some of the data that I shared with you, I had Jill's office go back, and they went back to 2015, and since 2015, we've only had two staff members who have paid tuition to send their children to the district. And I will tell you, next year potentially, there, there could be one that's currently paying tuition, um, and I've had a couple other, two other people reach out to me, so it might be three. So number one, it's not used very often, most people do not have their children leave the district they're into, to attend the district that they're working in. And number two, I do believe that this is, um, a great option for our staff, for some staff who are struggling with, um, you know, who for whatever reason would be struggling with their child going to another school, and, um, for whatever reason, they feel more comfortable, or it just works out better for them to attend school here. We still have the right to deny a child this option, um, so we would kind of look at, anything that we look at now, so let's say we have a staff member who says, "I want my child to go to Grindstone," and we look at our numbers in Grindstone, and we don't have room for a child at Grindstone, so we could, we could deny that and say, "Your child can't attend Grindstone, however, we do have space at Big Creek, your child would be able to attend Big Creek." So that goes with class size, and that goes also with any of our program opportunities. So anywhere where we would have, we would have the right to deny someone this option based on those kinds of things. So questions?
Should those parameters that you just outlined, um, or sort of the district's right to either deny or to place a student where it makes the most sense, should that be articulated in this policy, is that somewhere in a different policy that we would refer to?
Yeah, so it's not actually in policy anywhere, because we don't truly do open enrollment, but it is in our intra-district information that we share with families.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So right now, we have, you know, we can, we have a student who said, who could say, "I want to leave Big Creek to go to Grindstone," and of which, if we have room there, we can do that, if we don't have room there, then we wouldn't do it. And just like with intra-district open enrollment, we also do not provide any transportation, so that's more guidelines kind of information than it is policy information.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Do you know any of the neighboring communities or other school districts offer something such as this? I think Olmsted Falls is used to.
So there are districts that do open enrollment, period, right? So, as long as, and most of them are, I, I honestly can't tell you, I think the vast majority of them are, you have to border, um, you know, so, let's say, let's say if we were, if we did an open enrollment policy, which we do not have, um, we would do it with bordering school districts, so it'd be Strongsville, it would be Olmsted Falls, it would be Parma and things like that. So, um, it's, I think it's a toss-up, there are some districts that don't do open enrollment at all, there are a lot of districts that do do open enrollment, and then there are districts who also do this, that it's not considered open enrollment, it's that they are allowed to attend tuition-free.
Tracy? Question on the, um, uniformed service aspect, is that in addition to the existing policy, is that what we're looking at here?
Yes, so if, if you go back up in it, and I put the asterisks of where it would fit into this current, into that, into policy 511.
So just additional information to the policy, the existing policy?
Correct, yes. Yeah, both of these are, the first one we have to take, we have to put that into policy, but the second one then, is an optional piece that the board can, can choose to add to that policy.
Could you provide us with a list of other districts in the county that offer this?
Yeah.
And also, is there a way of finding out how many staff would be actually interested in this?
Um, I, again, I, yes, but I don't, yes, we can, we can do that.
I mean, that can change year to year.
Sure.
Yeah.
The policy should be decided on, you know, for future, not just this year or next.
Yeah, and the other thing is that it, um, there may be staff out there who did have an interest, but couldn't, because it was a tuition situation, but if it is, uh, you know, if it's tuition-free now, you might have takers that you didn't even know would have been interested if they had had that opportunity prior, so, so the number might go up, but, but I could imagine that would be really hard to kind of guess what that would be.
Yeah, I, I, to be honest, I don't anticipate it going up much at all, um, but we'll, we will, we can do both of those, um, survey to see...
Would funds follow the student from wherever they were? How would that work?
Do you want to talk about, did you, I'm sorry, Rick, you were a little muffled, did you talk about funding?
Yeah, would the funding follow the student from wherever they were?
Um, yes, these kids would be counted as resident kids in our funding, um, so we would get the base cost for those kids, um, and our base cost right now is around $1,100 per student. We also would get the categorical funding for those kids if they were career tech, if they were special ed, if they were, um, English language learners, the, the different categorical funding that goes along with these kids, again, they would be treated just like resident kids.
Thank you.
One last question. Tracy, you said the first, um, policy, it's required, the second policy is something that we should decide, should these be split as two separate items for when we vote? In the, at the next meeting or meeting after?
That would be up to you. I mean, if they're both, if they're both going to go on as policy, then you would vote it as one, I mean, that's, it's really up to you, because it's the same, under the same policy, so I think we can decide how you want that to, to look at the next meeting.
Okay.
I see what you're saying, because you say you might have, not everyone, not the other.
You don't have a choice, second asterisk, you know, two asterisks, there's a choice. I don't know that it would be voted down, but I think that, um, option should be there, because, you know, if it's voted, you know, in theory, if it's voted down, does that mean the one asterisk one still goes in anyway?
Yeah, we can, we can do that, we can, we can split it.
Can you also check with the other school districts that you're going to be looking into and how their policy reads?
I'm sorry, say that again?
When you check to see what other school districts do this, you can check what their policy is.
Yeah. This, and just so you know, this is the recommended wording from NEOLAW, so, that's, that's the wording that they recommend. Well, we will split it though, for the next time, we will split it.
I want to share that although I think it's a great idea for, and a great service for staff members, I also, part of me is, has a concern about they're not paying taxes to our school district, like everybody else is.
They are paying taxes to their local, you know, I mean, if we look at ourselves as a family of public schools, so it's, it's not like those taxes are going to a parochial school being taken, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So...
We would, we would not do anything that would, that would, um, force us to hire additional staff. That, that's where having the right to say no, you know, we get, we get ten, we get ten people, and we say, "Oh no, that's another staff member," so, you know, we cannot do it then.
Okay, so can you get us that information?
Mm-hmm, yep.
And then we'll move forward from there?
Yeah, do you want this on, do you want us to hold for this on, until the July 14th board meeting?
Yeah, so we have a chance to review that information.
Right, I don't think there's a rush to get it on at the end of the month. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Was that July 14th?
14th, I think.
Okay.
Okay, next is legislative update, and there are two that I would like to just briefly give some information on. First, um, this one was passed in the House, I don't think it's gone to the Senate yet, so it's not official, but it's, it's in there. Um, originally, it was called the Save Women's Sports Act, or House Bill 61, it wasn't supposed to be on the schedule for legislators last week, but at the last minute, um, Republican representatives added the language to a completely different bill, they added it to, um, House Bill 151, which is about educator residency program. And I just want to share, it's about transgender athletes, and this is something that OHSAA does not support, that OHSAA has had policies regarding transgender athletes for seven years, and in those seven years, only 13 transgender female athletes have participated in OHSAA sports, and only three of those were at the high school level. The remaining athletes were in middle school. And last school year, out of 400,000 high school athletes, there was only one transgender athlete on a high school girls' team. So this new bill would allow anyone, okay, a parent, a coach, another player, to question a player as transgender. When that questioning happens, um, that player would be required, again, required, to have a doctor evaluate her external and internal genitalia, testosterone levels and genetic makeup. The findings would then need to be reported back to the school so they can be cleared to play, this is a process that could take days and even weeks. My opinion is that this is incredibly invasive and traumatizing for female athletes to have to endure, uh, just because someone else questions who she is, and again, it's legislation for a problem that doesn't exist, when we've had one student out of 400,000 that wants to participate as a transgender athlete. So, um, I think the new, it's how, it's sub-House Bill 151 now, is what it's called. So keep an eye out for that. And then the other one is House Bill 99, which passed the House and the Senate last week and was signed into law today by the governor. The author of this bill said that it is, quote, "Ohio's response to the calls to do something about gun violence." House Bill 99 authorizes teachers, principals and other staff to carry firearms into classrooms after 24 hours of training. This new law lowers the required training hours for armed school personnel from about 700 hours to 24, which is made up of four hours of scenario-based training, and a maximum of 20 hours for first-day training, history of school shootings and reunification education. Excuse me. Um, so how does this affect our school district? Um, it's, it's passage and signage by the governor, does it not change anything in our current policy on weapons, which is policy 1617? That prohibits staff possessing any weapons on any district property, and allows only security personnel to carry a weapon. Um, so it doesn't change anything in our current policy unless the board would choose to act on that. Is there anything anybody would like to share under one of those here? Okay. Uh, next is Board of Education comments. I would like to thank, um, the high school staff, especially Dr. Smithberger and Mark Muha, the guidance department, for putting on a fabulous commencement. Um, it was obviously a challenge to try something new, but I think it turned out great, um, I'm sure there were little things here and there that needed to be worked on for next time, but it was a beautiful day and a beautiful ceremony, and congratulations to all of our graduates.
While I was at Heinem's, like, a couple of days after that, this elderly man, older than myself, came up to me and had been at commencement and talked about how lovely it was, and that it was something new, but he just went on and on and on about just, he thinks that's the ideal setting, and he liked however he was hanging out, taking pictures, and it was just unsolicited, and I, he must have recognized, but it was very nice to hear.
And we all had the opportunity to participate in the Memorial Day in Brook Park, the Memorial Day Parade in Brook Park, um, two weeks ago, and that was a lot of fun, it was so nice, it's been two years since we've been in one, so that was fun, and we will also be at the Middleburg Heights Parade this Thursday. Anybody else?
Rick and I also attended the awards ceremony at Snow School a couple of weeks ago, I was so glad to be invited to that, that was my first time in Snow School, um, it's a really special building, I love that it's part of our district, and, and I was really glad to see, um, Mrs. Clammer be honored tonight, um, she's just a terrific leader in that building.
Yeah. Likewise, it is a place near and dear to my heart, and, um, they do some, some really important healing as well as teaching.
Are there any Board of Education committee reports?
I did attend the, that's the safety and security, there's the comprehensive school threat guidelines, workshops or training that I was part of, it was kind of an eight-hour online program first, and then a full day of the actual hands-on computer things, very, very in-depth, thorough, research-based preventative program, each, each building has their threat assessment teams, and the first half of the training, which was all online, like I say, extremely detailed, it really presents a nice framework and philosophy for the buildings to look at this as, I see it in a therapeutic model as much as anything else, so it's not a, um, it's not predicting anything, it's like, here's, here's the problem, well, this is how we're going to approach it, and we're going to approach it in a way that hopefully prevents something from happening, and if there's discipline involved, that's only because it's a policy, it's not the old zero tolerance thing, so it's, I think a much healthier approach to, uh, threat assessment, and then the follow-up with all the computers of the program, I think, as people get more familiar with it, will be very helpful, and the shared data, I think, is really important, being able to access that, and, and as very impressed, you know, if you can show a lawyer that I think it's a well-researched program to have chosen.
Thanks, Rick. Okay, it's recommended that the Board of Education enter into executive session, um, we have two separate ones, uh, first, for the purpose of preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees, followed by, um, executive session for the purpose of the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of an employee or official.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mac?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you everyone for watching.